Pursuant to Section 841411 of Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Douglas County's Board of Education, School District 0001, and Board of Education Service Unit Number 19 will be held Monday, April 1st, 2024 at 6:00 PM. And the Teaching and Learning Center, the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street, please visit our website, www OPS.org. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is published in the Teaching and Learning Center on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. The vision: Every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission: To prepare all students for success in college, career, and life. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Erdnberger?
Here.
Foal?
Here.
Head?
Present.
Holman? Juarez?
Here.
Crackey? Smith?
Here.
Tealyn?
Here.
Cassidy?
Here.
Seven, present.
Thank you, and Dr. Holman did inform me that she would not be able to make it tonight. I have not heard from Ms. Crackey. Do we have any motions to approve absences?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Smith, is that for both?
Yes.
All right, motion by Mr. Smith, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cassidy, any discussion? All right, seeing none, oh, sorry, Ms. Foal?
I motion to divide the question, so we can vote on Ms. Crackey and Mrs. Holman separately.
All right, we'll cover Dr. Holman first, any discussion on approving that absence? All right, seeing none, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Foal?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Seven, aye.
Motion carries, thank you, moving on to the motion to excuse Ms. Crackey's absence, do we have any discussion? Ms. Erdnberger? I have not, no. All right, seeing no further discussion, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Tealyn?
No.
Cassidy?
No.
Erdnberger?
No.
Foal?
No.
Head?
No.
Juarez?
No.
Smith?
Aye.
One, aye. Six, no.
All right, motion fails, thank you, moving on to school, oh, no school spotlight tonight, I apologize. Moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications, Board members, starting on the right, Ms. Juarez.
Thank you, thank you President Head, I just had a couple of comments that I wanted to make. I wanted to congratulate the ROTC students who received awards at their event that they had down at the Masonic Center. I don't know if it's called a temple, I apologize, I don't remember how you refer to it, but at the Masonic Building. And I was, I did go there for a little, a brief amount of time, and I did want to congratulate them. And I also went to the basketball games in Lincoln, and even though our team did not win and go on, I still wanted to congratulate North High and Central for making it that far, and I enjoyed going to watch the game. And I hope that things continue to improve for them, and who knows what they'll do next year, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erdnberger. Yep, nope, you're good, all right, looking left, didn't see anything, nope, all right. So as Ms. Juarez said, Ms. Cassidy, Ms. Juarez, and myself had the opportunity to go down for the Omaha Central-Bellevue West basketball game. Unfortunately, the result wasn't what we were hoping for, but congratulations to Omaha Central, also Omaha North, for making the state tournament. Hopefully, everybody had a great spring break last week, we're excited to have all of our students, all of our staff back, hopefully fully rested and ready to go this week, so moving on, you ready? Perfect, Ms. Erdnberger.
I'll have to punt here, and somebody should stop me if I'm wrong, but Item H16 on the agenda is for a contract with Qualtrics, and the description in the rationale, which is what I was trying to bring up, identifies it as being a first and necessary step to updating our exit interview process with teachers and staff. And I know that that's an important part of being able to identify what we do to make sure they aren't exiting. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for getting that ball rolling, thank you.
All right, thank you, seeing no other board comment, next item on the agenda is public comment and recognition. We have two speakers who have submitted requests to be heard for us tonight, and the Board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes, we ask that you respect that time limit. Dr. McFarland will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Dr. McFarland know, and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about, we ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak, and refrain from applause or any other outbursts during presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a staff member or a particular student, we ask that you not identify the student or staff member, and instead provide that information to Dr. McFarland. She will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Dr. McFarland, she will make sure each member of the Board gets a copy. As a reminder, Nebraska Revised Statute 821412 requires that any member of the public desiring to address the Board, identify yourself, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent, unless the requirement is waived for security reasons. And we have no requests for waivers. So we ask that, again, individuals, please state and spell your first and last name, your current address, and let us know if you're representing any particular organization. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium, please remain at the podium, do not approach the board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let Dr. McFarland know, and she will get those from you. It is now 6:12 PM, and our first speaker is Michaela Kazer.
Evening, my name is Michaela Kazer, M.I.C.H.A.E.L.A.K.A.Z.O.R., and my address is 11619 Grand Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska 68164. Good evening Superintendent Ray and members of the Board. First and foremost, I want to thank each and every one of you for your countless hours devoted to help the generation succeed. My name is Michaela Kazer, and I am here today to speak on a certain library book that I discovered was in the libraries of various OPS middle schools and high schools. I checked today if this book was in the school, actually in the schools, and I did find it on the school catalogs. I feel very uncomfortable reading this book, as I am a 19-year-old female, but I feel it is necessary so that the members of this Board and those watching in the audience know what kind of explicit, illegal, and pornographic material is available to minors in OPS school libraries. Parents in the audience, if minors are watching with you, I advise that you have them leave the room, because I'm about to read very sexually graphic material. Again, if minors are watching this, I advise you to have them leave the room, because I'm about to read very sexually graphic material. According to the American College of Pediatricians, the following observations were noted regarding young adults exposed to pornography compared to the control group. Number one, male subjects who were exposed to pornography demonstrated increased callousness toward women. Number two, subjects considered the crime of rape less serious. Number three, subjects were more accepting of non marital sexual activity and non-coital sexual practices such as oral and anal sex. Number four, because more, subjects became more interested in more extreme and deviant forms of pornography. Number five, subjects were more likely to say that they were dissatisfied with their sexual partner. Number six, subjects more, were more accepting of sexual infidelity in a relationship. Number seven, subjects valued marriage less and were twice as likely to believe marriage may be obsolete. Number eight, men experienced a decreased desire for children, and women experienced a decreased desire to have a daughter. Subjects showed a greater acceptance of female promiscuity. And the book I am speaking on today is called The Perks of Being a Wallflower, and it is by Stephen Shosky. On page 21, it begins, "I had a weird dream, as with Sam, and we were both naked, and her legs were spread over the sides of the couch, and I woke up. I had never felt this good in my life, but I also felt bad, because I saw her naked without my permission. Do you know what masturbation is? I think you probably do, because you are older than me, but just in case, I will tell you. Masturbation is when you rub your genitals until you have orgasm." Wow, I thought that, that in those movies and television shows where they talk about having a coffee break, that they should have a masturbation break. I told Sam that I jumped that she and I were naked on the sofa, and I started crying, because I felt bad. And do you know what she did? She laughed. And on page 30, the book says, "This one couple, whom I was told later were very popular and in love, stumbled into my room, and I asked if I minded them using it." And they, and asked if I minded them using it. I told them that my brother and sister said I had to stay here, and they asked if they could use the room anyway, with me still in it. I, I said I didn't see why not, so they closed the door and started kissing, kissing very hard. After a few minutes, the boy's hand went up the girl's shirt, and she started protesting. "Come on, Dave, what, the kid's in here, it's okay." And the boy kept working up the girl's shirt, and as much as she said no, he kept working it. After a few minutes, she stopped protesting, and he pulled her shirt off, and she had a white bra with lace on. I honestly didn't know what to do by this point. Pretty soon, he took off her bra and started to kiss her breasts, and then he put her hand down her pants, and she started moaning. I think they were really both very drunk, and he-
One minute?
-took off her pants, but she started crying really hard, so he reached for his own, and he pulled his pants and underwear down to his knees. "Please, Dave, no," but the boy just talked soft to her now, about how good she looked, and things like that. And she grabbed his penis in her hands and started moving it. I wish I could describe this a little more nicely without using words like a penis, but that was the way it was. And after a few minutes, the boys pushed the girl's head down, and she started to kiss his-
Thirty seconds?
She was still crying, finally, she stopped crying, because he put his penis in her mouth, and I don't think that you can cry in that position. I had to, I had to stop watching at this point, because I started to feel sick, but it kept going, and they kept doing other things, and she kept saying no. Even when I covered my ears, I could still, still hear her say that. "Do you know what, did they, did they know you were there? Yes, they asked if they could use the room, why didn't you stop them? You didn't know what they were doing, you pervert, and there's, this is only one sec, can I have?"
Time.
Thank you, next speaker we have is Michelle Rogers.
Hi, my name's Michelle Rogers, M.I.C.H.E.L.L.E.R.O.D.G.E.R.S. My address is 9547 Sprock Street, Omaha, Nebraska 68134. High Superintendent Ray and President Head and the members of the Board, I first want to give honor and, towards each one of you for the countless hours that you have, that you have put in to help these kids. I, I for one, I know I could not do it. So like I said, my name is Michelle Rogers, and I'm a concerned OPS resident who is now questioning whether or not I should send my future children to school at OPS. When I first moved to Omaha 20 years ago, I was told that OPS is the best school district, and, and that I have actually been planning to send my future children to school here. After becoming aware of what my future children could be subjected to through your school libraries, I'm extremely hesitant to send my kids to your schools, and it honestly, and then it would grieve me, but then also grieve my children, which, what they could be subjected to. And honestly, I'm about to read something very explicit, please know, I'm reading it directly from the book. I don't talk like this, but, and this is actually making me feel very uncomfortable, so just imagine how it makes children feel, as they're reading this book. And parents, the book I'm about to read is very explicit, and I urge you to have your children leave the room, due to its graphic content. Again, parents, the book I'm about to read is very explicit, so please have your children leave the room, and to, due to its graphic content. This book is called Me, an Earl, and the Dying Girl. So I just looked this morning, actually, and it is located at Bryan Middle School, so it is there. And it's by Jesse Andrews. So again, I'm reading directly what is in the book, this, I'm not making this up. Page 49, it starts, "I'm just saying, you do not leave Israel without getting laid." You could have an eight-inch thick titanium diaper bolted to your pelvis, and you would still somehow get laid. It should be their official tourism slogan, "Israel, where the virginity goes to die." Page 59, "Are you gonna eat her pussy?" "Yeah, Earl, I'm gonna eat her pussy." "Huh, yeah, do you even know how to eat pussy? Not really, Papa Gaines never sat you down and said, 'Son, one day you're gonna have to eat out the pussy.'" Again, I don't like this, no, but he did teach me how to eat a butthole. God bless that man, I would teach you some pussy eating techniques, but it's a little bit complicated. "Son, I don't have time for that, I got like 20 pussies over here that I need to eat." "Is that right? I'm on a pussy deadline." "You've got 20 vaginas all lined up in a row." "Oh, what the hell, what the hell, no one's talking about vaginas." "Greg, what the hell is wrong with you? That's nasty, I'm talking about pussy, I got a little honey mustard over here, a little Heinz 57, and a whole lot of pussy." "So gross." "My God, what if she wanted to have sex?" This is on page 69. "My God, what if she wanted to have sex? Would I even, would I even be able to get a boner? I was pretty sure it would be impossible for me to get a boner in those circumstances." Now it's, I'm gonna skip to page 74. "Yo, Pa Gaines drove me to the Whole Foods, so if you need some funky phlastic pickle, relish for that pussy, just holler." So this is where the, this is where the language gets-
One minute?
"Werderhase, Herzog can lick my ass cheek." And it goes on to say, just- And it goes on to say, it uses the F-bomb a lot in this book. Actually, to be honest, I'm gonna just go down the count for each word. Ass is used 57 times, bitch is eight, cock is two, dick is 22.
Thirty seconds.
Another word, man is three. The F-word is used 94 times in this book. The N-word, three times. Pussy, 13. Shit is 88, and tit, 7. So please take this into consideration, and thank you for listening. Have a good night.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. At this time, any board member may request that an item on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Do we have any motions to remove items? Seeing none, are there any abstentions? Ms. Cassidy?
Yes, I need to abstain from item H9, which is Claim C, again for my role on the OPS Foundation Board. Thank you.
Thank you. And probably should have done this first, but we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Smith. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Ms. Juarez. All right, we will still take your abstention, Ms. Cassidy. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Remind the board that the consent agenda is subject to Ms. Cassidy's abstention on Claims Report C. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Paul?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Krackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealun?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger? Adai?
Motion carries. Thank you. And let's see, we are actually going to be reordering the legislative report since we're not taking any action. It will be an information item, so Item J2B, the report of the Legislative Committee with Ms. Erdenberger.
Thank you, President Head. The legislature has 15 more days, which means they're going into overdrive. When, at our last meeting, I reported that they have now combined several bills as together for efficiency purposes. One of the bills has about eight different bills dealing with scholarship grants, funding for programs, a whole variety of bills that address teacher and staff recruitment and retention, all of which we support. Unfortunately, the fiscal bill for all of them together is approximately $20 million. So while there doesn't seem to be any opposition to any of those bills, we can assume that there will be some horse trading with respect to that dollar amount. More importantly is LB 1329, as I mentioned last board meeting. It has several bills that are attached to it, one of which has to do with emergency response mapping. Another has to do with prohibiting sending outstanding lunch debt to a debt collector. Parenthetically, OPS does not and has not done this, but there are some other school districts in Nebraska that do, and this is a bill that would prohibit that. Senator Wayne has a bill about what maps to use in our classrooms. There is a bill about infrastructure bonding authority. The most probably controversial bill that's in this 1329 is a bill to authorize different school personnel to be trained to carry firearms on school property. And that is, as you might imagine, pretty controversial. When it was a standalone bill, we voted to not to oppose that bill. Now that it is part of a larger bill, it is a little more problematic. Interestingly enough, there's some discussion about adding some more bills, and this is the part that's changed. It is possible that a bill that was introduced by Senator Murman to reclassify school districts instead of 1, 2, and 3, it'd be 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And in connection with that reclassification, there is some discussion about having the firearms portion of this bill not apply to the Omaha, the OPS classification, or the Lincoln classification that only... And Class 3, I'm sorry, yeah, 3, 4, and 5. Sorry, thank you very much. So the larger school districts will not have the option to have staff carry firearms. The smaller school districts will if this bill, if this whole package continues to go forward. The theory is that smaller school districts do not have the benefit of resource officers to help keep them safe, so therefore, people should be carrying guns because that's... Never mind. And that's about it, actually. There is some continued talk about the 3% soft cap on what the OPS budget can be. As you might recall, we did not use our board authority to override that 3% cap last year. However, of the 241 school districts in Nebraska, 188 of them overrode that 3% cap. And I think I've got this number right. Of that 188, only about 20 of them actually needed that 3% override. The rest of them kind of banked it for future use. I'm looking at somebody to throw something at me if I've got that number wrong. Approximately correct, right? So there's now some talk about whether that 3% cap needs to be revisited, and several people are going back and forth on different ways that you don't want to punish those of us that didn't take advantage of it. You don't want to punish the school districts that did it but needed it. But the legislature and the governor are not happy that about 150 or 60 school districts did the override even though they didn't need it. So there is some talk about a use-or-lose change to that particular law. That is still out there. And I think that's everything that has changed on what we've talked about. And like I said, it's moving fast and furious. I will send you a summary of this for you to look at at your leisure. And that's the entire report. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your very thorough summary. No, it was good. Do we have any discussion, colleagues? All right, seeing none. Next up on the agenda, we have one receeded report this evening. Item J1, the second quarter board conference expenses for 2022... or sorry, 2023, 2024. Moving to closed session, Mr. Smith for a motion.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss what the interim... That's no longer. That's his interim. Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, Negotiations and Legal Advice.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Ms. Cassidy, beat you to it, Ms. Juarez. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Cassidy. Any discussion? Seeing none, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Head?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Krackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealun?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger? Paul?
Aye.
Adai?
Motion carries. Thank you. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss what the interim superintendent, secretary of the board, and legal counsel, negotiations, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 6:32 PM.
Let the record reflect the board came out of closed session at 7:11 PM. Let the record reflect the board meeting adjourned at 7:11 PM.